Counselor Tom Doris, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys live, do it. Hear me? All right, Cynthia, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Brandhorst. Banstrup.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Sporer.
Here.
And Brandhorst is absent.
All right, thank you. So if you're attending via the telephone, you will have an opportunity to provide verbal comments during the dedicated public forums. I would ask, in the meantime, that you please keep your microphones or telephones on mute until the time of each speech. Now here, if somebody's, so please mute microphones, telephones. All right, did I get a motion for approval of our tentative agenda?
So moved.
Sporer.
Hopkins, Sporer. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
And Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. I think you have a screen for Nathan. I'd like to appoint Nathan Wolf to fill a vacancy on the Civil Service Commission. Nathan is a Central College graduate, has been heavily involved in coaching within the community, is a former Pella Police Officer, serving for more than seven years. Nathan is currently employed at Ramira as a sales training specialist. If approved, Nathan's term would expire on April 1, 2026. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Sporer.
DeYoung, Sporer. Any discussion? Paid to lose him off the police force. He's still in town. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Man, or not man, Cynthia, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
And Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would also like to reappoint Tom Johnson to serve another term on the Planning and Zoning Committee. Tom served on the commission since 2020 and has attended 15 and 17 meetings, held his term. He has been serving as Vice President of Finance and Administration Treasurer at Central College for the past seven years. Tom was very involved in the community, serving on several boards and planning committees. If approved, Tom's new term would expire on May 1, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Banstrup, DeYoung. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
And Sporer.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, I'd like to appoint an ad hoc indoor recreation center committee to ensure public input throughout destruction of the indoor recreation center. This committee will be tasked to work closely with the project architect and engineer during the planning and destruction phase of the project. The names of the committee members who have agreed to serve are on the board. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Sporer.
Banstrup, Sporer. Any discussion? And so, I've been telling people last Wednesday was about as much fun as I've had as Mayor of Pella because after a discussion on Tuesday, after our last meeting and discussing this project and the fact that I was going to look for a group of people to help. So on Wednesday, I called all these people and first of all, not one of them said, "I'll call me back." They said, the immediate response was, "I'd love to do that." And the level of excitement for everyone was very high, so that was a lot of fun. This is really a wide range of swimming, basketball, volleyball, tennis, wrestling. Sarah Turnbull, who has a special needs child, we know what they've been through. I thought it might be good to have someone with that perspective of this facility, its plan. Andrea Dana is a dance instructor. I thought it'd be good to have that perspective. So this is a really, really great group of people that will be involved in helping to plan this project so we don't miss anything. We end up with what we need for the community. So excited about this group. They're excited. Spencer volunteered to be the council rep. Jeanette and Mike will be staff rep with this group. Our plan is I'll have one meeting with them and then I'm out. I'm going to stay away from the planning process. But this group and whoever we hire for architect, engineers will go through the planning process. I think it'll be a great project when we get there with this group out there. Okay, anybody have any questions?
When will it's planned for the first meeting?
We'll have, we'll figure something out here soon. I don't know where we're at in the process with RFPs and architects and stuff. It'll be soon, hopefully this month, yeah.
Okay.
And then they'll be ready by the time we get somebody on board. Okay, so all in favor of approving this committee, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Sporer. Yes. DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Probably should abstain.
No, you're...
I support everybody else on their side.
Well, you're appointed by me. You're not voted, so.
And Hopkins.
Motion passed. All right, so at this time, we have time for public forums. So anyone wishing to address counsel regarding any agenda items, if you want to do that, please come forward. Please state your name and address, title, limit, your comments for three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
DeYoung, with Hopkins. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
And Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, public hearing regarding fuel oil, fuel oil storage tank enclosure project. Vince, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those following at home. I'm on slide number four this evening. And as Mayor Doris stated, we are talking and discussing this evening about enclosure around diesel fuel tanks on Washington Street. So this would be the diesel generating plant that the city owns on Washington Street, just west of Walmart Supercenter on Washington Street. We do have a picture of the fuel tanks up there on the big board as well. We have two resolutions on the agenda this evening. We'll be doing one presentation. I'll cover both action items on the agenda this evening. Now, to explain this item, what the intent of this project is, building an enclosure around the fuel tanks is to allow our diesel generating plant to operate in sub-zero weather for an extended period of time. Generally, and the logic director, Nate Spurgeon's in the back, I'll put him there. But generally, once things get right around minus 10 degrees, it's problematic for our fuel tanks and the operation of the diesel generating plant, which means operations could be problematic if it gets below 10 degrees for an extended period of time. The project that we're discussing this evening, we build an enclosure around the fuel tanks. The goal is to have right around 40 to 50 degree temperature within the fuel tanks, which will allow us to operate it for an extended period of time when you do have the sub-freezing or arctic temperatures within our region. Now, while we are considering this item, this is obviously a reliability issue. But also, it deals with our power supplier in this matter. Our power supplier, as counsel is aware of, and for those in the audience, is Missouri River Energy Services. Now annually, we contract Missouri River Energy Services for capacity on this, so they buy the capacity out of our diesel plant. We're also in the Midwest Independent System Operator Transmission District, or MISO as it's commonly referred to. And that's really, we can receive orders from MISO or Missouri River or the operations locally to operate the diesel plant as well. One of the conditions as far as receiving the capacity payments from Missouri River is that we are able to operate in cold weather conditions. And so on an annual basis, with this fact that when we talk about capacity payments for our power supplier, they generally range between $850,000 to over $1 million a year, so they are significant on an annual basis. And this is an improvement that is being recommended by our power supplier. In addition, at the head of MISO, and as far as purpose under consideration, which governs MISO, they are considering legislation that would require improvement, such as what we're considering this evening. So let's talk a little bit about the bid letting that we held on the project on April 19th. We did receive two bids. The low bid was employer construction of $517,900. This was significantly below the engineer's estimate of $1.5 million. So let's go ahead, please, Cynthia. Okay. After reviewing the bids and our engineer did spend some time on this, our engineer for the project is our electrical engineer, this DGR. They are recommending awarding the project to employer construction in the amount of $517,900. If the council were to approve these resolutions this evening, we would be back at the May 17th meeting with approval of the contract performance bond on that, assuming that council would approve that construction on this project, which actually began, could begin on May 18th of this year. We're ultimately looking at the spring of 2023 completion date for the project as well. Now, as we stated earlier in the meeting, we are considering two resolutions on this. The first resolution is adopting plant specs, contract, estimate, and cost. And the second resolution actually awards the bid to employer construction, which is a little better on the project as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, let us complete our presentation this evening. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you. Mike, Cynthia, any written comments or statement?
No.
Okay. Counsel, any comments?
I just had a question. When we get the engineer's estimate, do they give a map how they came up to that number? It just seems so odd that we're so far off on this that, just to make sure there was no miscommunication anywhere on any of it.
If you're following, I refer that back to Nate Spurgeon. One of the items that was under consideration was just the wild spring swings that they've seen in the construction industry this past year. And there were some unknowns with this project as well, going into it as well. So I'd say DGR's estimate, I would characterize it as a conservative estimate going into the project. Nate, maybe you might be able to shed a little additional light on this?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Just the unknowns with the economy of materials, especially lead times and what steel was doing, steel markets. Steel markets and aluminum markets were kind of unpredictable at the time. They've kind of settled back down. We're actually seeing a drop right now. But DGR in 2017 originally estimated this project at $450,000. We talked about it in the budget. That's what year, 2019, plus $600,000 in the budget. They, I think DGR was just being extremely on the safe side here and put a figure out there that they were sure it wasn't going to be exceeded, I assume. But no, I didn't get any specific math on it, just those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
You're on.
And I noticed with the timeline, the employer has given themselves some wiggle room.
Anything else? Any, but any in the audience have a comment about this particular item? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Banstrup, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
And Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. So moving along to resolution number 6432, entitled Resolution Adopting Plan Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimate of Cost for Fuel-Oil Storage Tank Enclosure. I think you've already said you have anything else to add, Mike, so I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Sporer. Hopkins, DeYoung. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
And Sporer.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to resolution number 6433, entitled Resolution Making an Order of Construction Contract for Fuel-Oil Storage Tank Enclosure. I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Sporer. DeYoung, Banstrup, or Hopkins? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
And Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6425, entitled Resolution Approving Preliminary Plaid for Dingman's Subdivision Plaid 1. I think we've tabled this twice now, right?
Yes, sir.
You got anything to add?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, go right ahead.
No, I'm saying, where are we at on this?
We're currently in the process of planning the zoning commission as we're trying to confirm a special meeting next week. So the council commission reviewed the plan or the revised plat at their April 25th meeting. They tabled the plat at that time to review options with legal counsel. We're trying to schedule a meeting for next week, and so we anticipate we should be able to take action on the new plat on May 17th. So we're recommending to leave this on the table, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just had one question on the formal resolution that we were to look at. It said, whereas the developer has not agreed to the conditions recommended by the planning and zoning commission, I had thought he had agreed to them.
I think the best way to describe it is that's what he told us at the meeting and then upon further review, the plat was determined as the plat that was slated on it as well. So on the 17th, because we do not have a motion to approve this, it'll be likely that you'll receive a new staff report along with the resolution.
Sorry, this will change.
Yeah, just for placekeeper, we're recommending keeping this item on the agenda, but there'll likely be a new staff memo along with resolution as well, along with the revised plat.
Anything else? Okay, so we'll take it up on the 17th. Okay, moving on, resolution number 6434, entitled Resolution Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on Proposed Vacation of the Public Right-of-Way in the Portion of Orchard Drive Located South of Monroe Street Between Lots 15 and 16, of the Monroe Edition in the City of Pella, Iowa.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those following at home. I'm on slide number seven this evening. As Mayor Doris stated, what we're simply doing this evening is setting a public hearing date for proposed right-of-way vacation for Orchard Drive, that is, south of Monroe Street. Listed up on the big board is the red highlighted area that shows the vacation area that's being considered this evening with this. And so it is important to note, when we talk about this particular vacation, that this request has came to us from Pella Regional Hospital. They own the adjacent budding properties in this area. There's been no utilities that are located in this area. And in addition, from a traffic standpoint and a transportation plan standpoint, we do not believe that this proposed vacation here inherently hinder or hurt the development of the city's transportation plan. In fact, it's not stated as far as any type of continuation of Orchard Drive. And so with this resolution, what we're simply recommending is that we establish May 17th as the public hearing date for this, for this item. There'll be considerably more details discussed on the 17th, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Banstrup, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
And Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1009, entitled An Ordinance Amending the City Code of the City of Pella, Iowa by Adopting a New Section 41.14, related to indecent exposure or conduct. This is the first reading. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board. This ordinance that we're discussing this evening, we've actually had two separate work sessions on this proposed ordinance. Tonight is the formal consideration of the ordinance as well. But generally speaking, it's very important to note that this ordinance was drafted by the city attorney and after, had two work sessions by the city council as well. Now, in explaining the background on this ordinance, when we talk about nudity laws in the state of Iowa, they generally paint their pubic and genital areas. Therefore, this request did come to us from an elected official that considers an ordinance that regulates both human buttocks and nipples to be found for rest. It's important to note that numerous cities in Iowa have adopted similar ordinances as well. Now, as far as the violation portion of the ordinance that we are considering this evening would be punishable by a municipal infraction. That would be a $250 fine for the first offense. And based off staff's previous communication, or council, excuse me, previous communication to staff, we are recommending formal approval of the ordinance this evening. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on the side of it.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? So moved. Sporer. Who, who's saying? Dave, Hopkins, Banstrup. Discussion?
I get the part about covering nipples, although it could be just another attack to transgender people. But the buttocks part reminds me of the rule of that were on the books for years and years and years, that nobody in the forest must have covered somebody. I just find that unmanageable. Probably will be ignored.
Anything else? I think we had two sessions of discussion here. We sent back the first time, personal changes, certification. I think our police chief did a pretty good job distinguishing what may be an offense opposed to not being a defense. So good luck with that. Okay. All right, so we will vote. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
And DeYoung.
No.
Motion passed.
I'm going to make a motion to waive the second, third readings of this.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there support for that?
Support.
So Banstrup, Hopkins, motion has been made and supported to waive the second, third readings of this ordinance. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
No.
DeYoung.
No.
And Carlstone.
Yes.
Okay, motion does not pass, so we will have a second, third reading. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 1010, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 122.03 of the City Code of the City of Pella, Iowa for the purpose of temporarily removing the requirement to obtain a design permit to operate as a peddler within the Oskaloosa Street corridor. And this is the first reading.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those following at home. On slide number nine this evening, as Mayor Doris stated, this ordinance temporarily removes the requirement to obtain a design permit to operate as a peddler within the Oskaloosa Street corridor. And when we talk about the Oskaloosa Street corridor, we have a map of the corridor, but generally speaking, it starts on Oskaloosa Street at the intersection of Main Street and Oskaloosa Street. It extends to the intersection of Oskaloosa Street and Southeast 16th Street. Now, on this map, anywhere where you see on Oskaloosa Street, that is a green highlighted area that says CC, that's for community commercial, zoning districts, that's where peddlers can operate normally within, within commercial districts. So anywhere on this map, plus a commercial, in a green area, plus the Oskaloosa Street corridor right here, a peddler can operate in. If the council were to approve this ordinance, they would not have to obtain a design permit for the rest of the calendar year. It was the intent of the ordinance. Now, as we discussed this, Cynthia, as we go ahead, please. And I train this discussion as we did whole work sessions on this item, and really the intent was to have a trial period where we did waive design standards for peddlers to see what type of input received both from the public as well as the peddlers themselves on this item. And this is part of a larger term of discussion when we talk about design permit requirements for peddlers. I can tell you, after being closely associated with the program for a number of years, this is a hot topic of discussion on an annual basis that comes up. So this really is intended to be a trial period. And with this, the ordinance would be in effect from June 1 of this year through December 31, 2022. It's also important to note that peddlers would be required to comply with the remaining pillars of the city code, which are mainly found in chapter 11, wanting to, as well as so with it. Mr. Mayor, based off the input that we received from council previously, we are recommending formal approval of this ordinance this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Sporer.
DeYoung, Sporer. Any discussion?
I love the idea of a trial period. Because I think the real core issue here is who be able to that ward want Oskaloosa Street to be an extension of the central business district or who they want their own atmosphere along that corridor. It's a great opportunity to check it out.
I believe I saw in CDC minutes where they also discussed maybe some permanent changes to this particular ordinance.
Whatever his intent was, is, I think this is discussed, like, they just, so everyone's on the same page with this item. The council wanted to approve this trial period. We intend to come back in the fall, late fall of this year in order with the results of the trial period. At that time, we'd also discuss CDC's recommendations. No idea if CDC recommendations is kind of a long-term issue associated with peddlers as well. But we think that would be the appropriate time to talk about those recommendations by CDC at that time.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
And Hopkins.
Motion passed.
I'm going to also make a motion on this one to get those folks to know what they want to do to waive the second, third reads.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Banstrup, supported by Carlstone to waive second, third reads. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
And DeYoung.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Now I need a motion for approval and adoption of ordinance number 1010.
So moved.
Banstrup, Hopkins, any discussion?
It's a very technical one, with the last one that says it becomes effective with publication. Does that mean when it's published, it can be more registered?
That is correct.
And it only has to be published once?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
And Carlstone.
Yes.
Ordinance is a doubt. Okay, abstract of bills number 2102. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For DeYoung, Hopkins. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
And Sporer.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member of any other business needs to be addressed this evening? Okay, any member of the public have any other business that needs to be addressed? So please come forward, state your name and address, title, limit, comments, three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will move into policy and planning. Are we going to start to discuss ambulance first?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor Doris stated, for those following at home, on slide number 10 this evening, as Mayor Doris stated, actually, let me correct that. Actually, on slide number 12, so sorry about the misstatement there. As Mayor Doris stated, we are talking about a draft ordinance to operate municipal community ambulance. Now, as counsel is aware, on April 5th, we did approve a conditional resolution, of course, authorizing the staff to proceed with the transfer of public community ambulance service. Now, when we talked about the conditional resolution, it's important, it was really based on two main conditions that we have. One of them was approval of the draft ordinance that we are considering this evening. The second one is a transfer agreement with the ambulance that would transfer over all assets to the city of Pella so we can begin operations with the Pella Municipal Ambulance as well. So tonight, we're talking about the draft ordinance, draft ordinance, excuse me, that would legislate the operation of the Pella Community Ambulance under city code. under city code with that. Now, what we have listed up here on the big board is just the main categories of the ordinance. We are looking at feedback tonight from the city council on these items. So, if there's an item that we're not clear on, please stop me and let's have the discussion on it. But ultimately, we're looking at direction for this item so it can be considered in the future for formal consideration. Now, as far as the organization structure of the ambulance, it's important to know that under the draft ordinance, the ambulance would be operated under the title of the ambulance chief. So, that would be technically the director of the ambulance, but it would be formally recognized under our ordinance as what the current director's title is, is chief. So, it's ambulance chief. The ambulance chief would report to the city administrator. Now, what we've also established in the ordinance as well would be a temporary advisory board. This advisory board would be, the intent of it is to help with the transition from the nonprofit agency over to the city of Pella. And really, try to assist during this transition period. Effective date of that, the board would be appointed by the mayor, be subject to, it would be recommended, excuse me, by the mayor, appointed by the city council. And the board would be in effect through the end of two thousand and twenty-two. So, the intent would be, our intent and the date that we're targeting for beginning operations on the Pella Community Ambulance would be July first of this year. So, the board would be in effect for six months this year. There would be a temporary board that would be recommended by the mayor and appointed by the city council with the intent to help with the transition from the nonprofit agency over to the city government.
So, I, who said I could ask questions? I know Greg's here too. What's the thought of who might be part of that temporary board? Has there been any discussions of that?
My thought would be the current board that we have would be the temporary advisory board. Just because they've been a part of this for so long and they know how EMS runs and they can assist in any questions that might come up or any, anything that might come up in the, in the next six months.
And is that a six-member board?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, well, let's go ahead, please, Cynthia. Now, I'm actually gonna start with the second category here on the big board first before we get to service outside the city limits. As far as the ambulance service fees, what the ordinance contains is that there would be approval by resolution on that. And the reason why on that is frequently that charges, charged by the ambulance are subject to insurance coverages on this as well and somewhat set in accordance with insurance reimbursement rates on this as well. So, from this standpoint, fees would be adopted through resolution. And then, we also had a requirement under our ordinance that they'd be required to cover the operating cost of the Pella Municipal ambulance as well. And so, what we anticipate when we talk about the fees is we'll have a cost per run on the ambulance. And that's what the fees are really gonna be based off of that as well. But it's very important to know that they will be approval by the city council by via resolution as well. Now, as far as, before we move on to service outside the city limits, is there any question on the, on the fees and charges for the ambulance service?
And that would be net of any grants or support you get from your state?
Yeah, the way, the way we, we work this, that would be the intent on that as well.
Mike, are those fees billable? Is that what you were saying, to the insurance?
Yes.
Okay. And if they're uninsured, are we still gonna try to collect?
That would be the intent. That's, that's similar to what we've done for other services. And once, once we render a charge or service to an individual, we try to collect that service on it. So, the means that we would go about collecting on the ambulance charges, we'd have to discuss with council, but we anticipate it to be very similar to how we currently credit, collect uncollectible accounts. Or maybe you might be able to shed some light on that as well.
Probably, Greg, actually, on what they're currently.
Well, what do we do from our standpoint on uncollectible accounts?
Well, it depends on what it is. So, we do use our credit collection agency typically. Where we've also assessed, we have the ability to assess property taxes for collections too. So, that's what we, we have done for our past due accounts, but.
It depends on what, what it is, Greg, and not sure.
We have the same, actually, credit collection agency that you guys are currently using with the city. Something that we will be able to do that we haven't, because we're a nonprofit, and it's something for discussion later on, is, I know at Knoxville, they started garnishing tax returns as a way to recoup costs that people were not paying, so.
Is, is it feasible to think fees will cover all the operating costs, collected fees?
The collected fees? No. Nope.
You, you showed up the Medicare thing, right?
Yes, Medicare and Medicaid both don't cover the cost to run out the door.
And you have nothing to say about that, right?
That's law.
We said that.
Yep.
So, it's basically about that federal G M E T?
G M T, Grounded Medical Transport.
If that, if that stays at somewhat a level, we'll be able to get close?
It still won't recover everything. I mean, we're still gonna be at a loss. I think we had it figured when we talked with one of the GMT specialists that it was about seventy-eight thousand dollars we would have collected this last year, which is still not quite.
And it'll be, there'll be a timeline before we collect that too, right?
Twenty twenty-five, I believe, is what she said, before we could start recouping monies from that. So, we have to show so much.
Yeah, it's a, it's a long game and process to be, uh, be eligible for it. And essence, it is, is, I won't call, I'll leave the terminology if you describe the rules, but it's very important that we start on July first with the ambulance service. Because from the state's perspective, they would treat next year as what I would call our base year. And that's what, essentially, would base all their cost calculations off right around the medical emergency transportation grant. And it's very important that we start, we have a full year of operations on that as, as well. If we don't have a full year of operations on it, then that's at the point where they have to start requesting legal waivers on it as well. So, that's why the emphasis is to start with ambulance on July first of this year.
And if, once that, it'll be a few years before we get it. Once it starts, then it's an annual.
Not necessarily. It's not guaranteed.
Okay.
Yep. I, I can't see them ever taking it away. There's gotta be something to replace it, because nobody's gonna be able to operate EMS service without those monies.
Which collection agency do both of us use, I guess?
Uh, I'm not familiar with.
And I know they're out of Oskaloosa.
Yes, they're out of Oskaloosa.
Credit Bureau Services.
Yeah, I think that's right, yeah.
And one of our thoughts for Mayor on it is, this is one item that we would have of the resolution of fees. We anticipate that this will be an action, action item that will be taken up by the city council before we begin operations. We have it technically scheduled for our second meeting in June as well. At that time, we'll also have the full budget for the ambulance as well and a heavy dose of finances. If not beforehand, that may be actually a two-meeting item where we dedicate the first meeting in June for policy and planning discussion, just a general finance discussion on the ambulance and then have the actual close at the second meeting in June.
Wrong story, we can't mess around.
No, that, we have some very strict timelines that we're operating on here as well. So, which brings us to the item that we do need some direction from the mayor and council on this. And with this, I think council member Banstrom said that, well, as far as the transition from a nonprofit agency over to the city of Pella, there would need to be some grace extended to some of the partners or some of the areas that are currently receiving service from the Pella Community Ambulance. And one of our thoughts would be is right now, the nonprofit has a service territory, I'll talk a little louder, that extends from Highway. All right. Cynthia, all right, it stands from Highway fourteen on, on the west side. They're basically over at the town of Lighten, correct, right?
Yes, pretty close.
Yeah, and then, basically, we're in the Lake Prairie Township once you get into Marion, into Marion County, north and south. So, it's considerably outside of Pella. There's agencies currently receiving and areas currently receiving service from the Pella Community Ambulance. And one of our thoughts, and this closely ties with the fees, as council is aware, with our other services, as we technically, but we don't, citizens of Pella, because of the services supporting property taxes, tends to receive a lower cost of service than areas outside of Pella. And that's gonna be an issue, then, not an issue, that's gonna be an item for discussion on it as, as well. And with these areas, what our intent would be is, once we get operations on July first, is to give them ninety days, which states that the ambulance would serve that same service territory up through September thirtieth. And so, that would give those, those areas ninety days. After the ninety days is over, the only way that we would be authorized, now, I'm not talking about emergency backups in some of the areas that we have, but we're talking about routine service calls. Afterwards, they would have to have an agreement that would be approved by the public city council that would establish their rates and cost of serving that area as well. So, that was the intent. And we placed the ninety days as kind of just a starting point of discussion in trying to determine what is the appropriate time period to be able to negotiate with the various areas outside of Pella for service. But our thoughts would be is, whatever date we establish after that date, delay away that we would routinely serve those areas as if they had an approved agreement that was approved by the city of Pella, or the city council, rather. So, with that, Mayor, this is probably the biggest item that we're gonna need direction from the city council on.
Do those, are, are there agreements in place now between the current organization?
No.
No.
Not written agreements.
But these are something new.
Do these would fall under the twenty-eight E umbrella?
Well, we envision, for instance, with the Lake Prairie trustees, that we'd have to have a new twenty-eight E agreement.
That's like me, that, that would be the, the model that we'd have to follow.
Yeah, we would have a, a twenty-eight E agreement for Lake Prairie. I know Lake Prairie has twenty-eight E agreement, twenty-eight E agreements for areas in Mahaski County as well for ambulance services as well. So, we'd have to talk through those issues with, with Lake Prairie. For instance, whether we would have separate agreements if we served anywhere in Mahaski County with those areas or if we still wanted to funnel everything through Lake Prairie as well.
Just my gut reaction is ninety days is kind of a short time to, to do that. But that just, just me talking with all the changes that we have going on. We've got a couple trustees that I, I know are itching to talk.
You may, if you want to, give us any input.
Can I talk about here?
You can do it from there, really. No problem.
Steven White, from trustee, uh, we have, and I'm also on the board with Greg, or, but, uh, we have, uh, Lake Prairie Township. We have a twenty-eight E agreement with Part of Summit Township. And Black Oak, Richland, and the town of Lighten that we cover the fire. And we collect from that. We have been supportive of the ambulance till December. We was paying them to help them out with all this going on. We stopped paying in December. Me and Mike have talked, we've met. We have some money we could put to it, but it's not near the money that you guys would like right now. We, we have, we have to take care of fire. We do not have to take care of EMS. Do we want to? Yes. We want to support it as much as we can, but, uh, it's, it's gonna be tasking for us. Me and Mike's talked. Mike knows where, where we're at. I guess you guys got any questions for us on it?
Just, just, your levy limitations are, are what's one of the biggest things that.
Correct.
Cause a problem, right?
You know, we got a new fire truck coming and we wrote a check for four hundred and forty-two thousand for the fire truck. I mean, and, and we, we share, which is good for us, good for the city. We each buy half the bunker for all the firefighters, you know, we share them and we share a building. And we do share vehicles back and forth too. So, that helps us both out there. So, that way, it's easier for us to contribute. Now, as you guys get bigger and annex in and start taking away part of the, uh, bigger areas around Pella, that'll bring our dollars down, but, uh, so. You know, we'd like to keep serving the people, but, yeah, with, uh, being on the board, it's, with Medicare and Medicaid people, there's more of us getting older and getting on it, it's, it's a struggle.
And so far, there's no, um, movement for the county to take over that role of providing ambulance services?
No, it's, you know, it's a, it'll be a long process. I think, Greg, you've had a couple meetings, but I mean, you gotta get people to get the supervisors on board and I'm not sure they're excited about.
There's gotta be a, a vote by the constituents. I think it has to pass by sixty percent. And then, they can actually levy up to seventy-five cents per thousand as a max that they could levy for that. But it's, who knows how long we, we have and who we can get that going. I, I don't see it on the ballot this November, because we have time restraints to get there, but possibly next November. So, you know, we're, we're looking at three to four years probably, don't we? For a while before that ever happens.
Did you talk with Marion or Mahaska supervisors?
We have not met with the supervisors yet. We have an advisory, an EMS advisory group here in Marion County that's been meeting. It's, uh, the, the chiefs of all the, the services. And we've been meeting and figuring out, trying to, how are we going to first educate the public? Because most people think they are paying for EMS, not realizing that they're only paying for fire. So, that's how to, how to educate people about that and how we're, everybody's losing money with EMS. So, how that's a need, so. And then, going through the process to get, make that happen.
And we're a unique deal, because it's two camps.
Not to overly complicate it, but do, is that a reason why some fire departments provide the EMS?
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, staffing is our biggest expense. And the one thing that can cross over a little bit, most, most fire departments provide their ambulance service. So, most fire departments use that money that they're getting for taxation to pay their, their staff, which in turn helps response for ambulance. So, you know, they're kind of cross pooling a little bit, but they're not at the same time, so. Or we don't have that option. We're a separate entity all by ourselves.
Is that not something that could be, did you guys explore that in your pre-meetings?
Yeah, we did that. Council member Carlstone, we did, we did talk about the organization structure. I'll take a stab at that. Right now, when you look at the Pella Fire Department, it's purely a volunteer fire department on it as, as well. And so, with an organization structure, and I think we had, like, Steve and, and the other trustee, if you wanna shed some light on this, I'll characterize it. But we've had a very successful partnership with Lake Prairie for a number of years on sharing fire services. And so, the thought was with the organization structure is, that's a very well-run operation that served the city well for a number of years, just like the ambulance. And so, the intent was to make the transition initially as a separate organization, as separate departments on that. And especially when you look at it from our standpoint, since we are purely volunteer and we do not have any full-time employees for the fire department as well, we thought with the transition that it would, that would just be another item for discussion if, if we tried to do that. So, based off how the departments have operated for a number of years, the decision was made just to keep them as separate departments in the transition to the city of Pella.
I, I just have a feeling that if you'd expect the firefighters to also provide ambulance services, we wouldn't have any firefighters. I don't think they have to be the same people though, do they?
What's that? No, we've, we've got a separate set. Most firefighters don't want anything to do with EMS. Most people get into EMS because they have to to be a firefighter. You know, so that's, that's where we're a little separate. We don't have that. You don't have to be a firefighter to be part of us. But to be a firefighter at, like Knoxville, you have to be EMS, because obviously, that's ninety percent of their, their business is EMS. But I joined Knoxville back in two thousand and four because I wanted to be a firefighter. I didn't want to have anything to do with EMS. I fell in love with EMS, but that wasn't the, the purpose that I, that I joined. And most firefighters don't want to have anything to do with EMS.
So, it's, it's unusual for fire departments to have strictly EMS?
Yes.
Providers?
Yep. Most of your Des Moines firefighters are, you know, they have both. In the beginning, seniority, they're trying to get off the ambulance and onto a fire truck.
Hey, have we done anything to help?
I guess just to zero in, and it gets important, on this transition, we talked about ninety days, having an agreement in front of council with ninety days. Councilmember Van Strathen said he thought that may be.
I think that's pretty short myself, given the big changes that we're having already, personal feeling. I think, I think it's, there's gonna be no good answer. We have combined all five bad answers and picked one of them.
Would you say, yeah, that's probably the biggest direction we have, an item that we need is, how long do we go outside and continue to serve existing service areas without an approved agreement by the Pella City Council?
I don't know. I, you did, it has to be chiseling stone. We're making progress, but not quite there. We should be able to stand out a bit.
Well, we can either do it, but here's a thought, by listing a date.
What forces us to do something?
Yeah, and then also ties into the legal aspect as well because in talking and drafting the ordinance with the city attorney, she stated that if the ambulance is going to operate outside of the City of Pella, it's benefit, it'd be beneficial to have that in ordinance instead of a resolution. So it has to be authorized to do so. And so, and we came up with, and our thoughts were, is when you look at the finances of the ambulance, you weigh out these service territories, we're gonna have to come to the, the right balancing to act on serving areas outside of Pella, at the same time being respectful, and also if not being respectful, you did with pure fact, the city and citizens of Pella are paying for the services as well, and setting those fees, and that could take some time. I had personally thought with this meeting, somewhere between ninety days and up to six, three months, to six months on it. But then again, and thinking about things, and generally depending if busy, if it's six months or if it's ninety days, my thought was if it's six months, everything will get done in that five and a half, right before the deadline. If it was ninety days, it'd be two weeks before the ninety days as well, so.
I just, you know, we have that temporary board, you know, proposed to go to the end of the year. You know, we could say up, up through the end of the year, but if we develop agreements beforehand, those agreements could, you know, go into effect prior to that. But then yet we'd have to be intentional about, about maybe working on the, I guess, really hard decisions that's gonna happen within that six-month period before the five and a half months. I, I would feel more comfortable going to the end of the year with some internal goals of trying to get these hammered out well before that, but not, not hamstring ourselves to get to that. That's just me.
That seems reasonable, matching up with that temporary council board.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Fred.
I guess I want to make sure that everybody's clear here, trustees do not have this kind of money. We level sixty-six and two-thirds per thousand right now for fire. And a little bit of emergency keep, which is basically hazmat cleanup that we have to pay for out of our own things or the bills out on the highway and stuff. So I don't know what you're expecting from the trustees. I mean, I can sign a twenty-eight E, you know, I've done all of them in the past. We have very little money available out of that after once we pay for fire. We've been waiting twenty years to like to get into the fire truck. We'd be waiting another twenty years to do that again. Are you just gonna start charging higher fee for the country? Is that what you want to do? I mean, is that collectible by insurance? I don't have the answer to those questions. If somebody has to pay the bill, trustees don't have it. So the only way I can see is higher fees and see if insurance companies get paid for it. The way my understanding is, the City of Knoxville right now services areas outside of the city, so. That's just my concern, and that's pretty much the concern of the world.
So Greg, how does Knoxville do it in the rural areas? How, how do those charges get done? When it's, because you don't, it's not, is it a City of Knoxville ambulance service or is it more?
Yes, it's a City of Knoxville ambulance service. And let's, let's clarify a little bit. Our townships are way more populated than Knoxville townships. So we go out a lot more in our townships than what Knoxville has. But Knoxville doesn't charge for it, they just get what they recruit. So they're losing monies there.
So basically, the citizens of Knoxville are subsidizing the rural areas, and everybody's okay with that in Knoxville?
No. No, in fact, Cal is probably, he's not here, but I'm speaking for him. He's probably more on board on getting this essential service tax through as fast as we possibly can more than anybody in the county right now. I mean, that's, that's why his high priority is to do, and Cal's the chief of Knoxville.
When you do the math, does the essential services tax cover the shortfall?
Yes.
Okay. So we gotta get people to say?
It would more than cover, I mean, we wouldn't have to do the seventy-five cent. I mean, you could probably get by a fifty cent and cover it, but, you know, as prices go up, that could change before it ever comes into effect, but they just have a maximum levy of seventy-five is what they've said.
That's really the ultimate answer, but how do you get there is a big question.
Wasn't there, I thought I was reading, Mahaska County, something like that from going on between the EMS and the work to Mahaska County.
I'm not for sure on Mahaska. Well, I know they're, they're a hospital-based ambulance service. So they have some different things that they, they get that we don't. And I'm, I'm not from an ambulance or a hospital base, so I can't tell you what those are, so.
And I think these special discussions will be one of the important items when we talk about the financial projections for operating ambulance, we've thrown out numbers of three hundred thousand as far as the deficits. We'll have that fine opinion here very, very soon on it. We'll also be able to articulate what the cost per run is as well. We'll talk about those reimbursement rates as well, so. More to come on the side, and if I'm hearing correctly, Mayor, consensus of the councils to push this back to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, so that would give us six months.
Based on my friends, township may be able to negotiate, I mean, please have some time.
Sure.
Okay? Good enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the sidewalk extension issue.
All right, Mr. Mayor, for those following at home on slide number fourteen this evening, the house background on the side of the Mayor Ward Stadium, we're here to talk about tonight's potential sidewalk extensions for the City of Pella. And for sidewalk extensions, what we're really talking about is areas that do not have a sidewalk on either side of the street. Another side of this council is where it did come up during the Timberview rezoning process. And specifically at that time, council inquired about installing sidewalks for the segments of streets on Hazel Street, north of Elm Street, and on Country Club Drive. In addition, subsequent to the meeting, staff had received inquiries from elected officials on installing sidewalks on University and Main Street. We'll be going over those three segments as well, so let's go ahead, please. Now, in discussing this item, it's always important to start off with what you can and can't do as far as the funding of sidewalks. Now, according to the city attorney, the construction of new sidewalks can either be funded by either a city, the City of Pella, so this would just be just like a normal city project that we would have, we'd install the sidewalks, it can be funded with the city resources, or it can be assessed to the abiding property owner. Now, in discussing this item, it is also important to note what we've done in the past. In two thousand and six, the council adopted a policy that just formally put in writing what they've been doing for a number of years. Put that, and that, we adopted sidewalk master plan policy on it as well. And my understanding, and for a number of years, it was the goal of the city council to have sidewalks on at least one side of the street on it. And the reason why we, some areas are lacking in sidewalks is really just the, now, what's the requirements in the city subdivision ordinance over a number of years. Right now, under the current subdivision ordinance, sidewalks are required public improvement by the developers. So typically sidewalks are installed with the developments, it's just according to standard, standard operating procedures. But it wasn't always that way with the subdivision ordinance as well. And that's why we do have some areas that were in subdivisions at the time, but were required to put installed sidewalks as well. Now, under our policy in two thousand and six, the policy actually assessed the cost of the sidewalk to the abiding and adjacent property owner, and to keep things relatively simple. When we looked at the sidewalk, the policy basically stated the goal was to have a sidewalk at least on one side of the street. And now as far as assessing the cost of the project, it was shared with the person on the side of the street where the sidewalk was installed, and they also assessed the party on the other side of the street. So both parties were assessed, the costs were split equally on the sidewalk. Now, it is important to note that the city's current legal council, they've stated that practice, they do not believe it's a lot of interstate code. What they've told us as far as assessments on sidewalks, they believe we can only assess the abiding property owner. So keep things simple when we talk about sidewalk assessments. If we were to install a sidewalk on, for our new neighborhood, wherever the sidewalk went on that side of the street, the city attorney's saying that's the only party that you can assess. You cannot assess the party on the other side of the street for a new sidewalk. That's their opinion on the matter as well. So the point being in talking about this, when we talk about potentially installing the sidewalks, it's always important to talk about the policy issues, not only what we're allowed to currently do, but also what's been done in the past. Now, with that, before I go on, is there any questions about what we can do, the funding sources for new sidewalks, or what has been done in the past?
When you talked about the adjacent versus abiding, is that a gray area yet or is that a settled case? So this is pretty clear now that you can't?
My impression is pretty clear, and Denny's had a lot of experience working in the city west of one with sidewalk assessments, and so.
Yeah, I mean, you can see how neighbors feel. Really, using abiding and adjacent is kind of confusing. It means across the street.
Yeah.
The other people, and throughout Pella there for a period of time, they did that. And so the people that smiled that didn't get the sidewalk, because at least they, they had paper, but they're okay because they did not show the snow. Because, you know, now, our policy's been for several years, sidewalks everywhere on both sides. Unfortunately, in some of our subdivisions during this period, they didn't even get the slope right. Where now our slope from back to curb to back to blocks, quarter to half inch per foot, slowed back to the street. We've got a lot of stuff that falls off, there's only five or six feet right away on that side. So, yeah, as Christine's pointing out, we think it's really tough to now assess the person on the other side to pay for that sidewalk on theirs, it has to be on their property. So I, I think it's set in stone too, what I've seen in the past, and, you know, just, just out in the neighborhood, I don't think it's gonna be politically correct to say we'd go back to that. That, that's a tough argument. What do you mean I gotta pay for my neighbor across the street's sidewalk? I just, I can't see something going back.
Oh, if it's illegal, it's easy. We can do it.
Exactly.
And just to be clear too, when we talk about the sidewalks, do sidewalks, council has some discretion whether we fund it as a city project or assess the cost to the property owner. Now, it's also just to not overly simplify things, but it's also important to understand once a sidewalk is installed under city and state code, if there's maintenance or repairs to that sidewalk, those costs have to be assessed to the abiding property owner. So once it's there, maintenance and future upkeep is assessed to the abiding property owner. When it's installed initially, the council has some discretion on the funding source for the new sidewalk.
So in the two thousand and six approved sidewalk master plan, does it spell out the funding assessed to the abiding and adjacent?
Yes.
So that plan, that minimum has to be updated?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, yes, sir. We can circle back to the discussion, but ultimately when we talk about installing new sidewalks, these are gonna be the questions that we're gonna ask, is it's a city project or if that needs to be assessed to the abiding property owner on it as well. So let's go ahead and take a look at some of these sidewalk assessment, and it's not assessment sidewalk areas rather. Now, I want to say, when we talk about the estimated cost on here, please keep in mind this is a high-level budgetary estimate at this point in time, and the calculations that we have are really based off the linear foot of what we believe is about fifty-seven dollars per linear foot for a sidewalk, which is basically a four-foot wide.
Four by four.
Four, four-foot wide sidewalk that we have here. Now, when we look at Hazel Street, on the eastern side of Hazel Street, we believe there's Apple right away located there. There are some utility issues on Hazel Street that's not included in this budgetary estimate. But overall, our staff felt that it was roughly about a seventy-four thousand dollar project to solve roughly thirteen hundred feet on the eastern side of Hazel Street. On the western side, a little bit shorter distance there, just shy of seventy, seventy-one thousand. They also felt that the grading could be more favorable on that as well. Now, when we get down to the Country Club, down there in these areas, and I'm sure if we were to ask Denny in all these areas, there's probably more to the story, and I'll defer on that. But generally speaking, when we look at those cost estimates, we are very much in line with what the cost estimates were Hazel. Just over seventy-three thousand for the east or western side of the streets. Once again, these areas, there could be utility issues or utility relocations that would require, that would be above and beyond these costs, so please keep that in mind. And Denny, is there any additional comments, not to get into the literally weeds on, on these areas, but?
No, just to kind of add on to what you're saying, there's a lot of up and down with that right away. You know, it's not, it's not leveling quarter, half inch per foot. Country Club's a little flatter even, although we even have a few driveways on that side that rain backwards towards the drive. And I don't, Nate left, but there, there's a couple of those air transfer switch here, and I don't know, those are extremely expensive. And unfortunately, a lot of people just go up to it, go around it. Well, you have to picture at night, right or wrong, bicycle right on that sidewalk, and in the dark, they're, you know, they don't make that sharp turn, you can have, so now you have an obstruction. You know, same with trees, if you have a tree that was planted, cleared back when, and people are attached to, you can't just make a quick circle around it, you have to make a long jog to taper it back so that you somewhat, you've eliminated that as an obstruction to make a hard right.
There are some track sidewalks that go around the tree.
What's that?
There are.
Oh, absolutely.
There are some that go around.
Absolutely, there's several in town, a lot in town. Which, you don't approve, or you try not to build them that way. So there, yeah, there's a lot of obstacles out there. There's a couple of verticals that would take retaining walls, but not real bad in that regard. We have other areas worse than this, but there is a little bit of retaining wall. And not all the driveways are at the right height at that one foot from, because a proper place for sidewalk, per suit of the city's code, now, the typical sixty-foot right away, the sidewalk, back sidewalks one foot in from that right away, on the public right away side. So that's why, why it says abiding or adjacent, is that's their sidewalk, it's actually on city right.
Well, I think, you know, in those two cases, timber line development happened out there. We'll have to do, something will have to be done, the sidewalks on these streets.
Yeah, it's extremely unfortunate that these neighborhoods were allowed back in the day with no sidewalks because it's never easier than when the houses are built. Now, there's a lot of challenges involved. And that's where these estimates are real raw and probably real short. I mean, there's gonna be a whole lot. And will they double due to some of these uniquenesses possibly?
Are these streets, are both of these streets at the minimum? Or are they retroed in, are they urban cross-section or not?
They're both urban. Country Club's twenty-five, Hazel is somewhere a little bit greater, might be twenty-seven. I don't think it's not thirty-one up in that area. Doesn't feel that way. Don't have that number exactly. But they are urban, they do have curb and guard. Country Club's shallow because we basketball over later.
Is that gonna be enough with the timber, sorry, was it timber?
Timber.
Timber view, when Timber view gets in, and, because that's gonna be an outlet road that he's all, correct?
Correct, and of course, in their master plan, Country Club's gonna connect to in phase two or three.
Yeah.
And then long-term, it will connect back to Maine.
Yeah.
And we, I don't know if we have brought that plan back to show that.
Yeah.
That loop back to Maine, and Hazel will veer off to the northeast and northwest, you might say. Somebody will keep going north, but that's probably like fifty years. Due to that Wesley life stretch, I'd like to think that might be in the next ten, fifteen years. And then you have it, two hours.
Yeah.
The traffic will get split, or somewhat. Hazel's a busy street today now.
So then, does that need to be considered? If we're looking at sidewalks, do we also need to consider the entire street? If it's gonna be heavy traffic all the way through down the road?
If it's going to be heavy traffic all the way through, down the road?
Well, the new plan will be sidewalks on both sides.
Yeah, but this, this chunk of Hazel here, does that need to be considered? If we're considering a sidewalk, do we also need to consider widening the street while we're at it?
You could. We haven't always held true that Hazel south of there, you may remember, we reconstructed just a few years ago, Mark. I think some of that all has in its offset. We had thirty-foot right away on one inside, and there's only twenty on the east where that retaining wall is that's leaning at it.
Yeah.
You know, and we would have had to buy a lot of right away. Down in there, that'd have been much harder and a lot more expensive than this area.
Yeah.
It's lighter. But policy-wise, we didn't bite down, go to thirty-one. That's only under twenty-six, there's seven, sure, match wall was there. And that sidewalk really doesn't have enough green space. We desired ten-foot of green space if we did. Some federal standards, if you're a federal aid route, you know, they demand ten, fifteen to front walk back to curb.
Picking up, I'll call gap areas like this, I think we've got to be realistic. Sidewalk on both sides is ideal, but if the photography just doesn't allow for it, or if we're looking at major use of the limitations, I think we've got to be realistic.
But to that end, I'm trying to solve the problem of, there are several spots in town where there's sidewalk on one ti, one side, and certain times of day, it's quite busy. So runners, bikers, dog walkers. And if the roads were not to code, I was thinking maybe try to bike lane or widen the road in part on one side, sidewalk the other side, allow for that kind of dispersment of the, of the use. Because that's a large development on the north, the schools are to the south. I mean, I just see that being, for both of those streets, something that we could try to compromise on both sides in a, to a degree, with the limitations of right away and et cetera. And wider streets are generally safer streets anyway, with the kid following the ball or whatever. But are either one of those parking allowed on the streets?
Yes, one side. I believe nothing matter in that. Yeah, one side.
I think that's something else that would need to be considered from a safety standpoint with children.
Kind of along that same point, you just reminded me, there's another piece in ADA now, it's been around a while now, they're enforcing it more. We just did this on the road, Shady Road, Doc Complex Road. And that sidewalk is all five feet. The reason being, in town, you give out the four foot, because every driveway is considering a passing lane for two wheelchairs. I believe the number's either sixty or seventy feet, if you have no driveways that would qualify, and that's why we just went ahead. A lot of cities now, they don't have four-foot standard as their sidewalks, they go on five, in larger lot developments, so that they're not in noncompliance with ADAs. And that kind of gives you, it's really not a trail yet, but it's, you know, so that's something you might want to keep considering too, is, do we really want a four? If we just go to one side, maybe we'll go a five like we did after on dealing. Shave the period. Because it does have a little better feel when two people are meeting.
I agree with that.
And this is the only one, there's several blocks on Monroe Street that are really nasty, nothing has ever been done.
And those have like a foot or two right away back to curb. So any sidewalk there, we've got to buy land. We got five properties or something.
Well, she'll go through the other two segments, where we're at, and we'll circle back and look for direction at the end on this. So let's go at the other two areas that were required and out by elected officials. So let's go ahead, please, Cynthia. For those who are at home on slide number seventeen, we did receive an inquiry from an elected official on this. And this would be on the East University Street from Central Drive to West Fifth Street. And generally, if you look across the street somewhere to the south of there, there's the city's water, uh, water treatment plant, excuse me. This would be about a three-hundred-foot section, estimated cost on that, using the same methodology, would be about seventeen thousand dollars on that segment of the University Street. The other area that we received an inquiry on, and Denny, I'm going to rely on you on this segment, would be on Main Street from basically Home Street all the way up to Brentwood. And if you look at the segment on there, this is generally the area where the street transitions from an urban cross-section to a rural, rural section on it. So generally, that's where you start to have the intersections and ditches in the area on it. If you just did eighteen-hundred linear feet on it and sold the sidewalks, and you consider the other issues that Denny's about ready to tell us about, cost would be about over a hundred and two thousand. But I think it's your, your feeling or thought, Denny, that this may, should be considered if we consider the reconstruction of Main Street.
Yeah, it's almost impossible. And if you drive it, you'll know what I mean. It's drastic ditches.
Sure.
You know, you couldn't even come close to ADA, and you'd be down in a hole, and then up and down and around. You know, the east side, it's consistent, but it's a deep ditch, you know, it's four, five feet deep. I just, you can tell it's filled to go to an urban section someday, then it'd be easy on the east side, the golf course side. Of course, then you'd have to cross back to Brentwood. Yeah, you drive that, and you'll see, I just don't see that happening until something maybe punched urban section on out in that dirty block.
While we're on this section, I run that and try not to die.
I was, I see what I was all the time.
And I, the speed limit, where does it change there? Because I can dodge a twenty-five mile an hour moving car. It's a lot harder to dodge with that ditch on the left, a sixty-five, seventy mile an hour car. None of them are related to me, I'm just saying.
Why, why you running on the road?
Because it's way less humid than Broadway.
It's flatter, and there are far less people.
Yes.
Uh, Broadway is packed, it's dogs and.
Bills.
Anyway. I don't even think I brought this up, but I like the idea.
It was me.
Brilliant.
Denny doesn't.
I understand the difficulty too, Denny, that's a tough, that's a tough road to do, especially on the west, but. A speed limit would be something to look at there, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, I'm pretty sure the thirty-five starts way up my.
Yeah.
Car's came.
Thirty-five is at the city limits.
Oh, okay.
But people come flying.
That's a suggestion.
It's not a speed limit issue, it's probably a reminder issue. We'll work it a little more often.
Well, I, I plan on where I'm going to bail, and it's usually down that creek, because those trees are growing over and cars, and I'm running out in the middle of the road by that point, so people see me coming on. It's, that, that needs to be fixed, there's too much population on the north side.
Yeah, right, with this, with Timmer View coming up, if we're going to be connecting into Main now with Fountain Hills exploding like it is, I think we have to start considering this. All right, I just see a ton of people running, biking, and a lot of cars flying in that car. No offense to you, I'll just be very clear, but it's, you know, they're just coming in from the country, and they're not paying attention, and it's just part of it, so.
The east side might be in danger from stray draws off the golf course, I don't know, I don't run on that side, but I try running against traffic. So there's a master plan for that part of the university, or, I'm sorry, Main?
Yeah, as far as the.
Any of our materials like that are rural, will eventually become urban. You know, and in that design, you can see how that was so high up in the air. Good design, typically, we go from rural to urban, it almost always is over the center line, at least two feet, maybe three, to get these slopes, so your sidewalks are out there, still slow back to the street. And then you pick everything behind there with extra storm suburbs, to do the normal intakes in the curb and gutters like Bourbon Street.
Well, timber view attaches.
Someday, that will be punched on out, you know. Oskaloos is probably one of the next ones to get into two forty of.
It's a great idea.
Okay. That's a, that would be, that's a major project there, because that'd be redoing the road, you'd have to redo the whole road to fix, to fix that one, I think.
Well, Travis is going to pick up the timber line.
Exactly. Certainly, it has to be in there.
Yeah, that's about a million, four, million, five today's dollars, about eighteen-hundred or whatever. Take that amount plus eight hundred, eight hundred fifty million.
So, yeah. It's probably, it's a lot of accelerating it at some point, because there is more and more people living there.
It's a big difference how fast that development builds out.
Yeah. Ties nicely into, we had another policy planning session on the seventeenth that you may have saw on our schedule, that's in transportation plan. But these are some of the items that we intended to talk about, missing transportation things. Could include other areas that would need officially upgraded for one reason or another. We can put this segment on as far as the street project as well, discussion on the So Mayor, just getting back and circling back to each of our other projects. And I guess my question is, do we want to, you know, just in thinking of the site, do we want to update our master, our policy for the site two thousand and six that we adopted in two thousand and six? Maybe update segments that we were intending to target that lack of sidewalks? And then address the whole policy issue, whether they're going to be city projects or assessed projects, or maybe a combination of both? Or do we want to approach each one of these projects on a case-by-case basis?
I think it should be some flexibility in policy as far as whether it's a safe project or assessed. No, not to back ourselves, we're wondering the past needs.
I think the main thing of all these ones, what order do you plan to do, and which one would be in priority? I just think that Hazel, Country Club are the first ones that come to my mind. This will be a big segment, you know, but it's going to have to be the CIP.
Sure, sure. Well, with the policy, it's going to need to be updated regardless on it. So if we did that, we could also, and I guess my question is, is we had four segments up here, I believe, but basically it's two that, about during the rezoning process, and two that were brought to my attention just in individual meetings with council members. But we haven't gone out in the community, council member Young talked about Monroe Street. I mean, that's been on the council's list for some time. That wasn't here. Yeah. But if you'd like, before that policy, we could go out and just have the complete list of areas too, so at least we generate a list that someone updated it if you would like before we, during the policy discussion.
Yeah, you know, back to that university, that little short stretch, that's more of the policy thing. And we've got a lot of holes in there, one or two houses missing, one or two yard lots missing, it would really improve an entire neighborhood. I can mention about five of them, but I won't pick on everybody tonight. And we just haven't had the ability to say, hey, you need to go put it in, or, let's say, assessment project, we'll do it, here's what it's going to cost. There's a bunch of those.
Okay, well, and we'll try to, we'll keep this project moving as far as the policy, because it's my, you know, expectation that this subject will probably be discussed again during the Timmer View planning process, so we'll be, you know, ensure that. There'll be agenda items, and we'll keep this moving here, but we'll update the policy, and we'll have a draft policy for the next fact of talk along with missing areas. Okay, if I, okay, all right, thank you.
Last sidewalk, one more.
I'm just going to say, that builds out the pace of St. Perry Ridge, there's no big
Sidewalk inspection program? Yes, sir. So Cynthia, if we could go down to slide number twenty, I believe, I guess, Mr. Mayor, just to switch gears, we talked about new sidewalks and construction of new sidewalks, let's switch gears and talk about our sidewalk inspection program. Ultimately, in two thousand and eighteen, or probably sometime, or seventeen, eighteen, we resumed our sidewalk inspection program. At the time, the council had a goal that every sidewalk in Powell would be inspected every four years. And we started off with the program in the northeast and northwest quadrants of the city. So if you wanted to look at the map on slide twenty, we started off in the orange areas and the blue areas. So we went out and inspected the sidewalks. We also took a list of the repairs of the sidewalks. And at that time, as far as any effective panels on the sidewalks, we assessed the cost of the property on it as well. And about the time after two thousand and nineteen, when we started the two thousand and twenty schedule, about that time, COVID nineteen hit, and it was the decision of the city council at the time to let some, stop the program on a temporary basis until the pandemic worked its way through. And so we did receive questions with council members as far as resuming the program on this as well. And that's what we're really here to talk about tonight, is resuming the sidewalk inspection program. Now, according to our list and schedule, we had the southwest portion of the city would be next on our list, that would generally be the southwest portion. So we're talking about the areas that would be south of Washington Street and really west of Main Street, or the yellow highlighted areas that we have. And let's go ahead, please, Cynthia. Now, when we talk about defective sidewalk panels, we have listed up a criteria up on the big board of what constitutes a defective panel under our, our, our program, really under city code rather. And we've also given some examples of defective panels that we see in the field on that as well. Let's go ahead, please, Cynthia. Now, if council wished to resume the program, and if it was the southwest area, we believe that it would take approximately thirty hours of staff time to inspect that sec, that segment of the city. And we hired out, we hired out garden and associates to perform the initial inspections for us in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, roughly about forty-five hundred dollars at the time. Hire a contractor to do it, it would be somewhere fifty-five hundred, six thousand dollars. And so we just threw that out for reference, there's advantages to hiring a contractor because it keeps the process moving as far as the inspection. But overall, we think the thirty hours is manageable, that we can get this done as well. Now, as far as the proposed repair cost, we believe generally, we look at current bid prices, but we talked about a standard panel, cost of defective panels somewhere between two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars to repair a panel on it. Now, as far as the timeline that we have, let's go ahead, please, Cynthia. If council were to authorize it, and we would start right away with the inspection program on it, that would be conducted over the summer. Now, the way things have worked in the past with the program, we've had a lot of success with it, is once we've conducted our inspection, we give the property owners a chance to repair the panels themselves. And some people, as far as the percentage, Denny, do you recall offhand as far as, I'm looking here, Jared's not here this evening, and Jerry wasn't with us. But as far as the percentage of people that repair them themselves or just waited out in city?
I don't think we, we didn't hardly have anybody repair them themselves, maybe a couple.
And what was unfair, contractors were hard to come by, but it was busy. You know, so that.
We, we also advertised a fairly decent price, I think, to, when we spoke with the residents, and we ended up getting that in bid format, so I think the price in the city was much less than people home.
We followed the same procedure, we performed the inspection this summer, we gave the residents a chance to repair their sidewalk, they have it on October thirty-first of this year. If they did not, if they chose to allow the city to repair the sidewalk, we'd let a contract next year, and during the summer of next year is when the panels would be repaired. Once the panels were repaired, and we had the tallies for the properties on it, then we'll start at that time in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three with the assessment procedure as far as assessing the cost of the program back to the property owner. But that in a nutshell is how the sidewalk program worked, inspection program. So, Mr. Mayor, what we're looking for is direction, specifically, and the big question is, do we want to resume the sidewalk inspection program?
I think yes.
Staff being to be able to do that, a burden or not?
Well, from my perspective on it, this is the height of development season right now, and so we say our staff would be able to get out and do this, but things, things pop up and happen on it. And so with it, we'd have to weigh out if we wanted to hire a garden and associates to conduct the initial inspection force or not. That's about five thousand dollars if we chose to do it. That's my only hesitancy with saying right now that we're going to do it over the summer of development season. Pretty busy time in the planning and zoning department. If something, if we did do it, we think it'd take about thirty hours. And thirty hours, and Jerry, you may want to talk about your thoughts on whether to hire the contractor, if it's something that we could do internally?
Well, with staff being out there, I mean, if we could get a golf cart from the golf course, that might help a little bit. But it takes obviously staff out of the office all day long, so everything that comes in is put on hold or handled, so it just delays, you know, this is a busy time, so it's one of those that we could do it either or, it's just some things may fall. it's one of those that we could do it either or, it's just some things may fall back and there may be a little bit of delay in customer service when we're out in the field. I'm blaming this versus if we were in the office taking care of those calls. So, that's just what you have to weigh in balance.
Does anybody have a problem firing contractors to do the inspection?
There's a lot of failures out there. We've got, you know, there's three, we've got about three dry years, now it seems like we're in a wet year, but the movement's horrible. First trip has just, five to dozens right now.
Why we need to do it?
Yeah. I think.
I know a guy who takes a walk every day, he doesn't take measure and has free pain with it.
How about the joggers?
I tripped a few times, does that count?
That's why I always have my head down, people think I'm a snob. I'm watching where I'm walking, so I don't trip and fall. Hey, that wouldn't be good.
That'd be embarrassing. Still roll.
So, yeah. Get a, three. All right. Very good. Okay, so, uh, we're not done yet. So, I have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five, paragraph one, where we discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price of the governmental body would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price of governmental body in the season of that property. Got a motion?
So?
Or Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Cynthia, he's called, roll.
Hopkins? Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, I see most people are leaving, uh, we're going to go into closed session. We won't... Counselor come to order, please. I can open session. There are no motions to come out of our closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Spore?
Hopkins, Spore, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no.
Totally.
Cynthia, please call...
Ladder? Hopkins?